Board of Education, regular meeting on Monday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty, at seven o'clock P M. And we present our David, Brad, Kenny, Jennifer, and Susie. It's time to move on to red make recognition of Mr. Kettles.
Yes, correct.
Superintendent of the Year.
Yes, I want to formally recognize Dr. Tom Kettles for years of dedicated service to Stigler Public Schools, but also being selected as the two thousand twenty twenty O A S A District Number Eighteen Assistant Superintendent Central Office Administrator of the Year. The state is broken down, and I don't know if it's eighteen or twenty-three, there's a certain amount of districts, and we fall in Region Eighteen, District Eighteen. Tom was nominated as one of the Central Office Personnel Administrators of the Year, and formerly wasn't presented that award because we didn't have an administrators conference, but two weeks ago. So I want to recognize him, and really, and Tom will tell you the same thing, all of our central office staff, I mean, nothing we do here is not without a team. So he'll tell you the same thing that not only Tom, but the ladies here in the district appreciate and accept this award. So, thank you, Dr. Kettles, but also everybody else here in the office.
Very good.
That's awesome.
Yes, very much so. Okay, it's time to move on to the approval of minutes of our regular meeting, May the eleventh, twenty twenty.
Make motion for approve minutes.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brad, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on May the eleventh, twenty twenty. Kenny?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. And so move on to special meeting on June first of twenty twenty.
Make motion for approve minutes. Second.
Oh, yeah, you weren't here.
I was.
Second.
Jennifer?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to accept the meetings, um, approval of minutes for the special meeting on June first, twenty twenty. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
David?
I'm standing.
Okay, and then approval of minutes for the special meeting on June seventh, twenty twenty.
Make motion for approve minutes.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, Jennifer, the special meeting minutes on June seventh, twenty twenty. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. It's time to move on to approval of conferences.
Uh, not very much, I mean, if you have any questions, let me know. I mean, really, four oh five through four seventeen is FCC LA, some Carl Perkins stuff that we spin out through there. The big spins on their Promethean board, that's grade school stuff. And then everything on the second page is either meal reimbursement, or for those who are twenty-seven years plus, or those who didn't use their vacation days, so.
I, I did have that four thirteen on that Promethean board.
Yes.
What, what is that?
It's a interactive TV smartboard where the kids can go up there and touch it, move things around. It's a very interactive, high-dollar chopboard. It's the latest and greatest.
Okay.
Was that, was that on a grant or something, or was it with, was it just encircled?
Four thirteen?
Reading sufficiency.
RSA money?
Reading sufficiency.
We get a certain allocation for our Reading Sufficiency Act.
And, and just to clarify, on page two, you said, I guess the top two are for meals, and the other one is for stipends for twenty-seven years of service.
Correct, because our pay scale ends at that, so this is a way to reward those who continue to.
And then the bottoms for unused vacation.
Correct.
Melissa didn't use any of her, or she used all of hers? So she hadn't sent her. You motion?
Has, has the plumbing?
Complete, yes, and, uh, I always said benefits are plumbing. Ramjack showed up today, and they said they'd be done by Wednesday. Originally said five days, but yeah, they thought they could be in and out in the next three days, so plumbing's all set. And we're not putting the tile down until Ramjack comes in and quotes everything right.
Make a motion paper as he comes.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to approve conferences as listed. David?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. Brad?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. It's time to move on to, I'm sorry? Other financial report.
Um, and it's same song and dance, we can talk about, hey, when you compare month to month, you gotta compare year to year. I mean, what we're looking for overall, we've talked about all year long, ending at a high point of, you know, hey, if we can end at one point nine. We're sitting at one six, but we've, excuse me, one five, almost one six, but we haven't got any taxes coming in. I mean, Judy and I sat down today, and there's a pretty good chance we can be at two six, um, when this next month rolls over of what we carry over for the year. In a big re, you know, we had some money, in the last year, we bought two school buses, well, we're not buying those two school buses, so. And then we've got three hundred and fifty of that stimulus money still sitting out that we haven't procured yet. So we're gonna have a very healthy fund balance, um, next year, starting.
I know, I asked this every time, it'll sink in eventually, there's a cap on this, right?
Yes, except for this year. Typically, it's, and it's different, I'd say fifteen percent, it's fourteen to sixteen, based off of your, um, number of kids and the, and the money you have coming back. But think of it a fifteen percent cap, you can't carry over any more than that. They waived that this year due to Corona, so we can carry over more than that, and we are doing that this year.
And if you said this already, I'm sorry, what, what percent are we carrying over this year, or you don't know that yet?
Great question, and I don't have that answer.
Okay.
No, I mean, I don't know what two point six is out of our, you know, twelve million, but it's gonna be more than fifteen.
Okay, it's time to move on to public comment. The Board of Education invites public comment at this point in the regular meeting. Eight comments concerning agenda items in accordance with policy B E D dash R, no one present for that. Information, items, superintendent's reports.
Uh, ceremony updates, we sent this email out, just clarifying, uh, the nineteenth is gonna be the first day, really.
Your panther said no.
There we go. Senior breakfast at Shelley's Cafe at eight thirty, they'll be doing practice right after that, back lory at the first assembly that Sunday. Graduation traditionally at eight o'clock, still holds. The backup for that will be the gym. What the high school committee has done this year is every senior's got ten tickets, they've color-coded them, so if we are in the field, they've got ten out there. If we do have to go to the gym, they'll have a preference for those five tickets, we'll be able to go to the gym. So one of the things we're doing to protect ourselves and each other is just limit some numbers. The big difference you'll see this year on the field, instead of it mocked up right in front of the home side facing them, it'll be more in the middle of the field, twenty or thirty-ish yard line, uh, facing the scoreboard side, so we can sit on the home side, and we could have, um, even some on the visitor's side, and if we need to overflow at the back, we will. So anticipate and hopeful for good weather, so eight o'clock at the field, and the stage will be shaped a little bit, it'll be facing a little bit different.
The plan is on the field, and the backup is the gym.
On the field, and the backup is on the gym, and we're hoping for the field. And then the next day, Wednesday, is our end of the year breakfast closeout. We've done a lot of closeout stuff at our sites, but, uh, haven't had a chance for everybody to get together, and that's, that will be nine thirty on the twenty-fourth. That'll be, I want to make sure that you guys all feel invited to that, because that'll be a year where we honor our retirees, but also those people with five, ten, fifteen, twenty-five, thirty years of service as well. So, um, if you're free, we'd love to have you at that. And Stigler First Assembly and Shelley's Cafe are sponsoring breakfast, so we want to recognize those guys. Facility stuff, and some, some of the things, uh, I don't, I don't even have, yeah, I've got some of the fencing things on there. We talked about the gym, the plumbing remodel's complete, Ramjack in here, they talked about the twentieth, but they said, hey, we're gonna be in and out of here, uh, by, by Wednesday. On the north side of the main middle school building, and you could even kind of see it right by the football entrance, where the maintenance barn is, where our, um, old dumpsters are, they just put some, um, I would call it fencing, uh, but it's metal all the way around there. Especially at the middle school, it looks really good, you can't even tell whether there's an entrance or a gate, it looks part of the building. So hats off again to our maintenance guys for doing that. And then, you know, we keep talking about roofs, and we're good with where we are with roofs, well, we had some pretty torrential rains here in the last month between last board meeting, and had a new one on the gym, but our guys were able to get up there, we borrowed a boom chuck from somebody, and our own maintenance staff was able to get there, and slip that stuff down on there and get that fixed. So, um, feel really good about even when something pops up, us being able to take care of it internally, so. Just some dates to remember, and some hats off to some facilities, things going on, things are going pretty smooth right now.
Does the school board have any function per se at graduation? I haven't been to graduation in a hundred years, you're supposed to speak.
I can speak, I don't know if anybody would listen.
No, what, what we'll do, and we'll kind of play, we, we met this morning, actually talked about it, we'll, um, kind of let the next couple of weeks take it, take itself and, and play itself out, but letting those students know whatever they're comfortable with, you know, if you stick your hand out, somebody's probably gonna shake your hand. If you don't want, if you don't want to shake hands, don't put your hand out, just receive your diploma, if you want to do the knuckle, I mean, whatever your comfort level is. So I would say we've gone from, you know, everybody probably sticking their hand out and shaking all, you know what your comfort level is, and you're gonna each have some certain individuals that you're gonna get closer to than others, and you know who they are, and they know who they are. So we're just, we're gonna plan on standing on the stage, and if you have somebody special that you know wants the diploma from you, um, that is something we probably do. At certain times, just make sure you guys rearrange yourselves for that. But it's been typically, the high school principal introduces the board and the student, and it stands, and then the president's at the end with the diploma and the handshake. So that's normal, we might play it by ear when you get there at seven thirty, and adjust you and tell you where you're doing something different, but, um, I think if you're there by seven thirty on, uh, that Tuesday night, we'll give you a quick little run-through.
Yes, just follow us.
I'm not lobbying for anything, don't get me wrong.
Okay, it's time to move on to action topic A, consideration of second semester attendance waivers.
Um, included those in there, those came from the community at the high schools, so I want to ask, uh, your, I would recommend that, yes, we do approve those. And we'll tell you, just full disclosure, it's pretty much a blanket, um, this year on, on waiving all those, anything with attendance and kids being gone due to what we had, and not leaving the school building, so would like to ask.
Make motion for approve second semester attendance.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to accept the second semester attendance waivers as listed. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic B, consideration of workers' compensation insurance for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Um, gonna recommend O S A G, I mean, you talked to other people in our class, I mean, they're pretty much, they're the ones who run the business. Some other ones quote some bigger schools, but we can't even, um, get a quote with them, we've been with them for a while, so would ask for workers' comp to go with O S A G.
Did, did this change much?
Yes, it went up five thousand. And to get it less, we've got to get people off of it, you know, I mean, that's kind of the name of the game.
Make motion for approve O S A G, is there a workers' compensation insurance for twenty twenty-one school year?
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to, um, enter into a contract with O S A G for the workers' compensation insurance for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic C, consideration of property liability transportation insurance for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Yes, and you guys did get both of the updated bids, we actually had some back and forth the last month, and was, um, thankful to get that a month ahead. And it ended up, I mean, we got another one early this week, so those are the most current ones. It's gonna be our recommendation to go with O S I G. I know coming in last year, two of the things we, big things we talked about were pending litigation and rough coverage. Well, both of them have the same identical rough coverage, so that's a wash. The quotes are very, very similar, uh, in O S I G, even though we were covered in O Smart in the past on any, um, uh, legalities still out there, we're still covered under their policy, and O S I G here in town said they would hand walk us through anything that we had to do if there was anything, so it wouldn't be a burden on us, so.
How many, how many quotes are in here? I was trying to get two.
Two different, O S I G and O Smart, those are your two main vendors in Oklahoma.
And the recommendations.
Would be O S I G, and that is your local one.
Just go up also.
Um, it actually went down, uh, it initially was gonna go up, and we let them know that we were having some competitive bidders come in, and, um, one dropped, there's over twenty thousand dollars.
It's amazing what competitive bidding here do.
Yeah, yeah. I make a motion, we, uh, use O S I G for our property liability transportation insurance for twenty twenty-one.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David, to accept, uh, the property liability transportation insur- insurance with O S I G for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Was that, was that the low one too?
Correct.
Okay, I was trying to get through these.
Yep.
Action topic B, consideration of renewing our membership in Oklahoma State School Board Association for the twenty twenty-one school year.
And let's just continue to be a member, and the services and the PD you get from that.
Twenty eight fifty.
And that's all the training, that's the training?
Well, and a lot of it, there'll be extra on top, but it's just your member services and your emails you get included with, and the updates you'll get, the legislative updates, and making sure that we can call on them for legal advice, I mean, just having them as a resource is the first one.
I make a motion, we renew our membership with the Oklahoma State School Board Association for twenty twenty-one year school year.
I'll second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer, to renew our membership in the Oklahoma State School Board Association for the twenty twenty-one school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action, action topic E, consideration of renewing our policy maintenance service subscription with Oklahoma State School Board Association for the twenty twenty-one school year.
These are our policy templates, it kind of, they, they give us some guidance, and they make recommendations, uh, and I'm gonna segue to the next one, I'm gonna ask. This is our policy services, but what we have to do if we just stick with this one is anytime we change something, we have to update it internally. Lindy and Judy print it off, then they have to get it to each site, who has the three-ring binder, and make sure it goes in each site, if we miss something, we do. Or if you do a search for something related with curriculum, you have to manually go through there. Well, the passing this, and then passing the online one, gives us the ability to host that online, so you can just look at it on our website, and not have to try to scroll through a three-ring binder and find a policy. You can type the keyword in there, and we'll give you, whether it's two or twelve policies that relate, so you don't miss anything. So that's the recommendation for this one, is to have the, the service, and the next one's to make that service go online.
Does the O S S B A have legal, do they have attorneys on staff too?
Three or four, yes.
Make motion for the action topics E and F as listed. I'll second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David, um, to renew our policy, um, maintenance service subscription with Oklahoma State School Board Association, and renew our assembled annual subscription with the Oklahoma State School Board Association for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic G, consideration of bids for hang of Connerd land for the twenty twenty-one school year.
We have one bid in, I spoke with the bidder, uh, we had talked with, um, Mr. Dawson as part of F F A about the possibility of him utilizing that land for some certain projects throughout the year. And he talked about, really, the only thing I could see myself doing it with it next year, just because we got a bunch of other things going on, is our skeet shooting, is just have a place close to go over there, um, and talk to the, talk to the bidder, and they said, yeah, I mean, if you're F F A wanted, I'm just gonna go hay it twice a year, so. Just have them give me a call, and that, well, I'll know over there. So if we do it, open and accept this, that's something that he has already agreed to, just allowing to partner with us on that.
Where's this at?
It is northeast of the high school, so if you're sitting at the high school catty corner, there's forty acre field.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Yep. To whom it may concern, Snow Farms would like to place a bid in the amount of three hundred and fifty dollars for the Connerd land. If you need further information, please contact me. So that's the single bid that.
And that's to, just to cut the hay off.
Correct.
How many?
Usually do it twice.
What is there, how many acres is there?
Forty, forty.
This should be changed to January if we could.
Okay.
That way whoever gets the bid can get two cuttings off of it, January to January, because now they're, whoever's got it now.
It's right in the middle of the cycle, I know, last year there was some controversy because it rained, and they had to try to give it off, and with the fiscal year.
I think it's a fiscal year deal.
That's what I thought.
Don't know that we can do that.
I think that's, we, we talked about that once before, about changing it.
It's fiscal year.
You could probably do it six months.
Now, at this point, I worried, right, and I don't, I don't believe this is worried, right, myself, but it doesn't say you can do that hay.
How was our advertising? Our advertising? Yeah, I know, I didn't read it either.
Buying the land for three hundred and fifty bucks, exactly what it looks like, tugging. I make a place. You know, I don't know, I guess for your accepting bids, and I don't have any idea, that would seem like much for three acres worth of hay, but I.
No, because I think last year I counted, there were seventy-seven on there on the first cut of round bales, I think. And that's what we talked to F F A about, hey, it's not lucrative for us, if you're gonna use it, it would be, it's not like we're losing fifty thousand dollars or anything, it's three to five hundred dollars.
Can we make a motion, you think, with that, and a, a, a stake that we need?
To resubmit the bid to make sure that it is for hay of the land only.
I mean, I, I hate for it to wait another, for another meeting, but I don't.
Well, he currently has it right now for the rest of this month, so even if you, even if you waited till July fifth and took it over, it would only wait five days.
I personally think we need to table that, it needs to be run in a letter.
Yeah, that's easy.
Yeah, I, yeah, because always, before, it's always had hay.
Insurance, I just, uh.
Yeah, he can type another letter, bring it tomorrow.
I think we need to cut the hares up and sell the bales off of it.
And that's a lot of work. I'm just gonna donate the tractor.
I make a motion, we table the Connerd, uh, land for hay bits for twenty twenty-one square.
I'll second. Okay, hang on just a second. Uh, motion made by Da- David, seconded by Ja- uh, Jennifer, to, uh, table the bid for the hang of the Connerd land for the twenty twenty-one school year. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Is that, sorry, is that for the whole year, or is that per cutting?
July one to July two, I mean, January.
H, consideration of the following E rate policies, number one, acceptable computer, network, and internet web usage policy, and number two, E rate record retention and procurement. Procurement policy.
Those are both specific policies that we have to have, and they have to be board-approved for us to get government E rate funding, so. Just, it certifies to them that we're doing these certain steps to get those government funds.
So we can do those together.
Correct.
Does the O S S B A, do they come, do they draft these policies, or how do, how do we get these policies?
This, no, comes from our grant application that says we have to, O S B A is more in terms of your discipline or dress code, or just how your personnel policies at school. This is specific due to the E rate grant.
Make motion for approve E rate policies, H one and H two as listed. I'll second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David, to accept the following E rate policies, number one, acceptable computer, network, and internet web usage policy, and number two, E rate record retention and procurement policy. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Um, action topic I, consideration of open transfers for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Lists have all been, uh, submitted from our principals, this allows us to reduce some of the paperwork, because we know these kids are gonna be here through their career, so we just have to have those board-approved.
So they're transferring here?
Here to us, and it's a yearly procedure, unless we approve this open transfer, then they don't have to do all the paperwork every year.
Okay, and this is obviously a good thing for school, because you get more money too.
As many as you can get, yeah.
Make motion, we, uh, uh, accept open transfer for the twenty twenty-one school year as listed.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer, to accept the open transfers for the twenty twenty-one school year as listed. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic J, consideration of contract to provide alcohol and drug testing services for employees for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Got three there, the one that we would, um, ask you to approve is with Alpha Drug Testing, um, instead of, um, better overall. Each of them have two different rates, but it's a better overall way for, for what we use with Alpha.
Are they local?
Alpha is.
Is there ever any conflict of?
Well, and that's the next one I'll ask you, is when we do the student one, it's not a local one, I believe it's based out of Salasaw?
Mul-.
Muldro, uh, just so there's not minors interacting with adults that might have some confidant, even though you go with those, and it's supposed to be very confidential in a small community, we thought it better be outside with the student one, but we're okay with inside with the adult one.
Make motion, we, uh, use Alpha Drug Testing, with alcohol and drug testing services for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Second.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by, by Brad, to contract with Alpha, um, alcohol and drug testing services for employees for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic K, consideration of contract to provide student extracurricular activity drug testing services for the twenty twenty-one school year.
This is the one that we'd like to recommend, Precision, it is the, the one that's outside of town.
That's one we've always used in the back pass from last year, like, three or four years. Price is the same, or?
That's what I was trying to.
A little more.
Oh, sorry.
Thirteen versus ten, our randoms are seventeen versus ten.
For student and?
Three and seven, I mean, it's.
I think I agree, I'm not having local people to, to help.
It's, these are.
From thirteen, yeah, okay.
To thirteen and seventeen, so, but you're just paying for confidentiality.
Yeah, and probably traveled, a little bit of travel fund due, and mileage, and, okay. Do you want to make a motion, sorry, can you make a motion?
I'll raise it.
With Precision.
Make motion, we, uh, use Precision Drug Testing for our student extracurricular activity drug testing services for twenty twenty-one school year.
I'll second. Motion made by Kenny, Jen- uh, seconded by Jennifer, to, um, contract with Precision for our, uh, student extracurricular activity drug testing services for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic A, all consideration of approval of contract for the P T and O T services for the twenty twenty-one school year.
O T, P T, you're gonna recommend total rehab, there's a little bit, um, they are not the low bidder, but it's not very much, but what we do get out of total rehab is periodically they'll come in and meet with us and tell us data points, and the proof's in the pudding, we're getting what we paid for. They were very good with their results that, that, uh, they've got, you had a lot of teacher recommendations in there, so based off of that, what Mrs. Bush is, uh, standing up for them, gonna recommend total rehab.
Sorry, I don't know anything about this, what, what's P T, O T?
Physical therapy, occupational therapy.
And we offer that to?
Students who qualify for that service.
Okay, okay.
So it's not a blanket, everybody gets this, or they work with a lot with our littles, and then specifically individuals.
Make motion to recontract total rehab for our, uh, P T and O T services for the twenty twenty-one school year. Second.
David?
Yes.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David, to contract, um, with, um, total rehab for our P T and O T services for the twenty twenty-one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Action topic M, consideration of approval of contract for copier services for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Have, and I don't know, I think you guys just have two, three, three in, uh, Monday, but it was much higher, it was grew out of Fort Smith Fayetteville. And I brought that in there if you won't look at, but it's definitely a higher bid, uh, than the other two. Miller is one we've had with, and then ACS is the one that we're gonna recommend, it's a.
Who are we recommending?
ACS.
Have we always done it with Miller?
We've had it with Miller for a long time, um, and like I said, I've been here for a year and haven't seen Miller until this week, until they knew we were doing our bids. And came in with a much higher, a couple hundred dollars a month bid. I mean, their bidding process this year was to look whatever they bid us five years ago, and change the date to this year, and that's what it told me, so I just did everything I did five years ago and brought it in.
ACS out of Broken Arrow?
ACS is based out of Broken Arrow, I know Tom and I have seen him the last several years, I've, I've never done any work with ACS, but I mean, they're at all of our conferences and venues, that's the preferred one out of Arkansas, that came back higher than the other two.
And the difference in ACS and Miller price applies as what?
Almost three hundred or three hundred and something a month, lower with ACS, um, and we're gonna get the same or more amount of new copy machines with them. And then the other thing not in his comparison plan is, if you're one of our customers, we do, um, I don't know if he called it a scholarship, I'm sure there's a right word in there, but.
Athletic advertising.
Athletic advertising grant, that there'll be five thousand dollars that goes towards athletic out of ACS, you know, if we put them on their, um, in our bulletins, or our football programs, or things like. in our bulletins or football programs or things like that, so that's in the bid, that's not even included in the bid.
And they come in and take all this and?
Hold out.
All everything out.
Remove some of the nice new, move where, yeah, we don't have to touch anything. His will do. When he came in here in February, they wanted to do this big high-tech analysis of all of our study, and he did it, but he only got to do it till March until we ran into Corona and stuff. So he could've gave us an analysis of everything of, of where we needed to move some things around. He did that, but it, some of it was based on our projections and he's like, hey, if we need to come back in six months, we'll come back in six months and redo stuff. But this is based off of your last contract and what I've seen you guys do in three weeks.
You know, I'm sure this is the way to go to Joe, look at all about buying the copiers.
Yeah, um the deal with copiers is your service plan. You know, you buy one and you get a lot, I mean, it's, it's all about the service plan and all three of these guys are service plans based off the amount of copies you do. That's pretty normal. Um buying them, yes. I know we bought them in Clinton, but we bought used ones and we bought a service plan with the guy who did them. So I think it's all who you can get your service, if you trust your service guy, it's, it's probably fine to have some used ones because you know who's gonna be working on them. Well, if you go with this company, they're gonna guarantee the service because we're going with the company. So that's probably the big difference.
They're high dollar too.
The onus would be on us to fix them if they weren't, weren't through a company.
Miller's out of McAllister and the other one's got, I mean.
Broken Arrow, and then the third one, which you don't have the bid to hide.
Yeah, that's what, well, I only have two, two of them in here. It's a perfect, is it for five years?
It's a one-year rollover. I mean, you, you could do away with it in a year, but to buy the copiers, you've gotta be on there for four plus years to pay the copiers off. I think they're all on a sixty monthly, so it'd be a five-year.
Also, right now it's costing us three thousand a month and it's going to twenty six fifty-two. Is that what the?
If that's bid two, there were a couple in there, if that's.
It's A C S, it says uh current copier programs, three thousand, and then proposed is twenty.
About three hundred less, yeah.
Fantastic, yeah. So it's less than we're paying now, basically.
Correct. For an upgrade. They're gonna come in here and upgrade every machine and they might take one if we've got a fairly good one and move it to where we've got one that needs to go. Um but other than that, I think there's thirteen new machines coming in here.
Make a motion that we go with A C S for the contract copier services for twenty twenty one.
Second.
Second.
Brett?
Yeah.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Brett to approve the contract with A C S for copier services for the twenty twenty one school year. Uh Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. It's time to move on to executive session. I propose executive session to discuss and act upon the following business pursuant to twenty five Oklahoma statute. Three oh seven being one of the Open Meeting Act. Number one, discussion of employment of administrative personnel for the twenty twenty one school year. Tony Gilmore, high school principal, Eric Stout, assistant high school principal, Tom Kettles, assistant superintendent, federal programs director, Matt Jones, middle school principal, Joe Copeland, assistant middle, middle school principal, Lana Mayhall, grade school principal, Melanie Harmon, teacher, assistant, grade school principal. Number two, discussion of continued employment or non-reemployment of temporary teachers for the twenty twenty one school year. Number three, discussion to employ support personnel for the twenty twenty one school year. Number four, discussion to employ a fifth grade math teacher for the twenty one, twenty twenty one school year. Number five, discussion to employ a high school leadership math teacher for the twenty twenty one school year. Number six, discussion to employ a part-time high school math teacher for twenty twenty one school year. Number seven, discussion of summer maintenance personnel. Number eight, discussion of resignation of Rhonda Barnett, school, uh grade school cook, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Number nine, discussion of resignation of Laura Moore's Kitchen, high school science teacher, effective end of nineteen twenty school year.
Make one twenty one executive session.
Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to convene an executive session at seven thirty four P M. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer? Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Motion that we uh employ the administrative personnel for the twenty twenty one school year as listed.
A second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by David, I mean Jennifer, I'm sorry, I said David. Um to employ the administrative personnel for the twenty twenty one school year as listed. Um Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
I make a motion that we continue employment and non-reemployment of temporary teachers with the exception of Robin Bochamp. A second.
Motion made by David, seconded by Brett to employ um temporary teachers for the twenty twenty one school year with the exception of Robin Bochamp. David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
I make a motion that we table the employment of Robin Bochamp.
And you're adding one in on there?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, explain that to me, what's the, what's going on there?
Till a later date?
Till a later date.
For, to what? I mean, I'm, I guess I'm.
To the next board meeting.
Okay, you put on there the first one that we wouldn't employ her as a teacher, teacher, and then you said, again, is that on the employment of?
I'm not saying that we're not rehiring her tonight. We're hiring everyone else as my first motion except for her. And we're gonna table her with the possibility she could be hired or not rehired at her next board meeting with the second motion.
And a later date, yeah.
A later date.
Okay, and that's on what action topic?
That's on, that's on F.
Yes.
It's two different motion.
On the same.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Need a second, please. A second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to table Robin Bochamp's um reemployment um till a later date. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Okay.
Support personnel. Make a motion that we employ the support personnel who rehired for the twenty twenty one school year as listed.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by David to employ support person, support personnel as listed for the twenty twenty one school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Fifth grade math teacher.
I make a motion that we employ Casey Boils as the fifth grade math teacher for the twenty twenty one school year.
Second.
Who's, David? Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by David to employ Casey Boils on a temporary contract with fifth grade, for the fifth grade math teacher for the twenty twenty one school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to employ Sam Walker for high school leadership math teacher for the twenty twenty one school year on a temporary contract.
A second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to employ Sam Walker on a temporary contract for the high school leadership math teacher for the twenty twenty one school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Um I make a motion that we employ Dixie Caldwell for a part-time high school math teacher for the twenty twenty one school year on a temporary contract.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Kenny to employ uh Dixie Caldwell for the part-time high school math teacher on a temporary contract for the twenty twenty one school year. Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion that we uh hire the summer maintenance personnel as listed.
A second. Motion made by David, seconded by Jennifer to accept the summer maintenance personnel uh list. David?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
And Susie, yes.
Make a motion to accept resignations of Rhonda Barnett and Laura Moore kitchens.
A second. Motion made by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to accept the resignation of Rhonda Barnett, grade school cook, effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty, and resignation of Laura Moore kitchens, high school science teacher, effective end of nineteen twenty school year. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Okay, any new business?
Yes, uh one item of new business. Would like to submit a letter from Candace McNamara and accept that to that so we can let those fill that position. Speech language pathologist.
Make a motion to accept Candace's resignation.
Second. Speech pathologist.
Of course, yes. Speech, speech language pathologist.
Make a motion, uh motion made by Kenny, seconded by David to accept the resignation letter from Candace McNamara, the speech pathologist. Uh Kenny?
Yes.
McNam- McNamie, oh McNamie, McNamie, okay, I'm sorry. Uh Kenny?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Anything else? Adjournment? A second. Motion made at seven fifty-four P M by Kenny, seconded by Jennifer to adjourn. Kenny?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Susie, yes. Thank you for your time. Bye thirteen.